Uh, ponder this, yeah. I have to isolate the upper.
Stay real live. Oh, and everybody, we got new microphones. They pick up everything. Whisper they're gonna pick it up.
They pick up everything on news.
That's where more, did you hear that? The new, new microphone pick up every. I tested it.
Uh, I'll just say it's, it's not the clearest. But yes. We can hear at least sound, if not necessarily words, when you're quiet like that.
Thank you. Teacher, Charlie Brown's teacher, you recording? Well, welcome everyone. Thank you for being here. Uh, to tonight's Paloma State Council meeting on January twenty second. Uh, we are first gonna get started with a rule call.
Mr. Councillor.
Present.
Yeah.
Matt Lehman.
Here.
Christopher McMoore.
Here.
Jason Gilson.
Here.
Pauzy.
Here.
Mouse Jones.
Here. And so, we are going to add. An unexpected item before public comments. But, we have, uh, some amazing Paloma staff that put in a lot of hard work. Extra effort that was necessary. Um, during the last ice apocalypse that we had last week. And we just wanted to recognize some of those staff being here. And Chris, I'll let you go ahead and take off.
Yeah, I first wanna, uh, recognize Elijah Weedman and Andrew Turner. Uh, Elijah's here in the audience tonight. So, after talking with Gary and with, um, Kevin Fear, our Public Works Director and Supervisor. Um, just felt like these two went up and beyond what was called for. I put a little script together and ran by him, just make sure I said it on. So I'm gonna read this first. Um, on Tuesday, January sixteenth. I issued notice to all employees that all office would be closed due to the ongoing winter storm that had covered the roads with large sheets of ice. Downed hundreds of trees and large tree limbs blocking roads, sidewalks throughout Paloma. In response, Public Works Director asked, what if I have guys that wanna work today? Then they are crazy, wasn't my thought. Uh, but Elijah and Andrew reported for work that morning. They cleared down trees, removed branches from the streets, bought out frozen water meters. Responded to, from calls from property owners who had pipes that had frozen. Uh, they also hopped in and sanded a lot of the city streets, but it's in much better position to be ready to go next day. Um, for business. So just wanted to recognize these two individuals from Public Works. All of the crew has worked really hard this week to bring it back. But these two in particular stepped up, came in when they didn't have to, and really put, uh, the city a good spot and, and made us proud. So, thank you to both of you. Elijah, if you wanna come forward.
I'll just mention that I, I saw them both out after all the hard work. Um, at the, at a local restaurant and supporting our local businesses. But, uh, we were really appreciative and I got down my driveway because of the gravel and the extra on, fair on the drive. Thank you, Elijah. Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And thank you, Andrew. Really appreciate you. Andrew is one of our newest employees and, uh, really appreciate the effort that he's put in during the ice storm. So, thank you. And then, we also have a certificate of appreciation for Jim Michael. And, uh, Hi Gersky, do you wanna say a few words?
Yeah, so Jim's regular scheduled shift was Friday, uh, week right before the added storm. As you know, we were four twelve, so four on and then four off. He came prepared to weather the storm this week with his adventure van and ended up spending six nights, six days in our parking lot. And actually picked up another shift for another officer that wasn't able to make it in due to the, the weather. So, definitely appreciate it.
So, you are all welcome to stay in the rest of the council meeting where we have some really amazing things. Update on what we're gonna talk about. We got an intergovernmental agreement with Building Codes, um, Division, talking about our E permit system. We're gonna be talking about our city's attorney services agreement. The Samaritan Awards, the skate park feasibility study and conceptual design. The strategic plan update and scenic byway corridor management committee appointment. So, lively conversations I'm sure you all really love. But first, if anyone signed up for it. Yeah.
Thank you for your time. Effort.
Thought I might, uh, give them that opportunity. So, uh, a chance for you here for public comment tonight, sir? Okay, great. Started checking. So, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
For sake of, just for sake of, uh, being polite. We're gonna go ahead and move the skate park conversation up. Which is no reason that you, unless you are really interested in hearing. Yeah, that's all right, everybody. Oh, again, appreciate you being here and, uh, being interested in the conversation. Uh, so let's go ahead and talk about the skate parks feasibility study.
Okay, so, we've talked several times about the skate park. And, uh, the latest project was to do the feasibility and preliminary design study. We got a grant from OPRD to help us do. And so, we completed that with Grindline Skate Parks. Along the process, there has been a couple, uh, of meetings, public outreach meetings. With the, uh, Park Advisory Board. And then, the Park Advisory Board has also reviewed their conceptual design that I maybe were thinking about of. Um, I just want to, like, say apologies that this one didn't, the packet, it is actually. One sheet is what we have now as the final conceptual design. This is, uh, was in the last, um, public meeting. Um, and there have been a few minor changes to this, uh, that you'll see on your tables. Uh, so, most of which are kind of softening the look of the outside of the skate park. And again, this is a very preliminary design. So this took the input that we received from the, um. The survey that we did online and then just the meetings that we had, the public meetings that we had. Um, overwhelmingly, what we heard was that a lot of people wanted, uh, more street, uh, style skate features. So, you'll see on the conceptual design that there's a lot of, um, you know, rails, a lot of open space to be able to move around, give people. Room to have a number of people, um, without conflicting and running into each other. And then also, uh, like a whole, a small bowl, um, and some other features. So, um, Grindline did a great job. They really know what they're doing. Um, we really enjoyed working with them, you know, to our site and, uh. Walked around with us for half a day to look at the locations. Um, and so, I'm really just going to open it up. I'm sure that you have questions about the, the analysis on the locations and then sorry, and that needed to do this ahead of time, but the conceptual design. And we can talk about funding as we, you know, about the conversation.
And I was mentioning, Councillor Andrade, you should, you, you got an email with this, um, additional doctor and case. Yeah, well, thank you very much for that summary. Uh, and Councillor Andrade, go ahead and, you have a question or comment?
Uh, yeah, I, um, had a question about the report. Is the whole report online somewhere? Because I tried looking at it before, um, online, the, um, like on the Park Advisory Board page. Uh, I tried Googling it and all I got was really just the presentation from Grindline. Uh, like the community presentation. Uh, I, I would appreciate having, like, all of the report. I, I might have missed some of it because, um, the audio, while it is much clearer. Uh, if there's other noise competing, it, it's really not all that loud. Um, so, you might have said something about, is the, is the report in pieces or, um, could you clarify that, please?
Yeah, so, the full report is in the packet. So, it is online in the packet at this point. We are going to be building a project page at some point. This will all be on there along with the, uh, presentations from the meetings. Um, the thing that I said that was in pieces was the conceptual design. So, we did email that to you, um, and then I've handed that out to the council.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Excellent. This is great. Um, I see that the price is double what we originally thought it might end up being. Well, we budgeted three hundred thousand, um, and now it's about six hundred thousand. And what kind of feedback have you gotten out that was from the people that were on the committee?
Um, so, the conceptual design does, it, it includes basically the features that we got the feedback about. We've not had an additional, we, we scheduled meetings to get input. We did not schedule a meeting to get, um, public feedback on the conceptual design. Um, what's important to note is this is a conceptual design. This is not if you put, if you say, yes, we approve this, this is a hundred percent what it's going to look like. We would have, you know, obviously, a final design phase where it would be looked at more and the, the park board would look at it more. And, um, hopefully invite some other folks because of the members. We do have one, uh, person who, um, did skateboard quite a bit when he was younger. So that's great, but they self admittedly are, you know, don't. So we hopefully could invite some other people for that, um, final plan phase.
Um, I noticed that it was saying having or using in the conclusion of that. It mentions about using the existing concrete slab, part of it at least. Is that correct? With, um, it was like this, well, on the conclusion of the back.
Yeah, so not the actual skate park concrete slab. There are some concrete slabs around that that were apparently built. There's some kind of a historical reference to one particular concrete slab that's there. And the thought was to maybe put, like, tables or seating area next to the skate park. But the actual skate park is not, um, to today's, it's not rated in a way that you could keep it. We did talk about it, the park board talked about, can you reuse the concrete somehow? Can you, and, and really, there was not a feasible way to do that, other than if they need some kind of fill. But even that, it would have to go through a process of approval to use that as fill, so.
Definitely.
Um, would there be any way for us to, like, compare and contrast what we have now to what we're proposing? So we, I'd like to know specifically what the differences are. I'm not a skater nerd, I know a lot, but to know specifically, oh, well, this is what we have and this, or these are the changes, or these are the upgrades, these are the modifications. Just so I, in my head, is it possible to get something like that to compare what we have with what we're projecting to do?
Well, I can tell you that the current skate park is just not. It is not of, of, uh, there's nothing there really for people to actively skate on. Um, so to compare, I don't think we could compare it because the modern skate parks are just not, the features are not the same. You know, um, it used to be where con, local contractors would build these skate parks, help out with the community. They're not professionals that build skate parks. So, i- it really is apples to oranges. It would be very difficult to compare the two. Um, it's not as if you're replacing the current skate park that's, has great active features that people enjoy using. Just to replace it, it, it really does need to be decommissioned one way or another. So, you know, that's, that's kinda where it's at.
Go ahead.
Um, the longevity of something that we would build like this. So how old is our old skate park? How old is that one that's not usable any longer? How old is that?
Josh Byram was the one that designed it and put it up as a high school student, so.
Twenty-five years old, yeah. Okay, and what's the longevity of something like this?
Yeah.
You think around twenty years, taking care of, and that's budgeted into over the years, like taking care of it, you can make it last indefinitely, but that's never had really any repairs or.
And how do we know, may I ask another question? How do we know what type of maintenance we require?
Wait, can you please repeat that? I couldn't hear.
Could we ask him to come, uh, closer to the mic?
If you don't mind, just introducing yourself. Hope a chair.
Duffy, just so y'all know, has been, um, at both of our public, uh, meetings, skate parks, so.
Okay.
Has been involved in the process.
So when you talk about maintenance, I'm just unsure, and I'm sorry, ignorant about this, the type of maintenance, is it monthly? Is it yearly?
Yeah, yearly, just keeping an eye on it, like, things that are, like, getting chipped up or broken away, like, keeping up with that. There's not much you can do when it comes, like, rain, like the park out now is, like, sandpaper, like, basically what you're riding on. I mean, there's little things keeping it polished or, you know, but that's years down the line and whatnot.
Thank you. Appreciate your insight.
I, I'll just mention that, um, I have a buddy who does a lot of skating and scootering. And it seemed that, I saw when they were writing on some of these features that some of these guys who ride also bring, like, epoxy with them and, like, help fix.
Yeah, little bits and things are like, oh, just need to fix, and they just do it. Yeah, I'm just putting it out there that when the city really does, like, focus on it, they can make them last indefinitely, more or less.
And so it's just something that just happens. Councillor.
Um, when I read through this, it, it looked like we needed twelve, uh, thousand square feet. And that the existing area, that is the max we can do. Um, I'm thinking if there was ever a desire to, you know, that across the, you know, creek would be better, because there's more space available. Um, and it's not used very much. And if we have to tear down everything that's there, then it's not like we're, it's gonna make a big difference if we get it crossed the way. I don't think, maybe I'm right. The bathrooms that are never open in the back, are they just gonna be open for something like this? Do you know?
So, the primary reasons why we, we, when we walked around the location and they gave the feedback and they looked at it for not having it across the creek were access. So, when it floods, you can't drive over there, so.
At the bridge, you can then walk.
You can, but that's in, in, in trying to make a skate park that's more accessible to people, that's making it less accessible. So that was one of their primary, um, issues. Uh, it is more saturated over there. The ground is more saturated as well. So that added an additional potential issue. Um, and then, yeah, it's just being proximity to the newer restrooms, the drinking fountain. Um, thinking about parents, so if parents have a child who's five and is over here skateboarding and they have a child who's two and on the playground. It, it would help parents to have things closer together. And as far as eyes on the skate park, um, that's just closer for people to be able to see from.
Absolutely. That was my one concern across the way when I.
And, uh, what is the difference? We were in Madras, um, last summer and stopped at a, is it called a pump track, um, pump track? So what's the main difference between putting in a pump track and putting in a skate park? And are they similar? Do they ever do both? Do they?
There are designs that incorporate a pump track and a skate park. And we did look at those initially. They do take quite a bit more space and then the cost will go up considerably because you're basically building a skate park and a pump track. Kind of all in the same spot. But the differences are, um, you know, a pump track is a track designed to go around with, you know, to kind of accelerate you as you go around it. Um, and when we looked at it, we, just the feasibility of it and the locations, um, it just tended to steer more toward. This is going to get, the feedback that we had, the community was, really, we, we want this kind of features. And that's the feedback that we had. We don't have a ton of feedback from people, but what we do have was kind of, um, lending itself more to this. With potentially a pump track in the future, or maybe somewhere else around the park or at a different location.
Well, just add to that, part of the feedback we got from initial meetings as well were, and what we saw from the survey was a desire for more of these street features and less of the transitional features. The Corvallis, um, park has got more transitional stuff, so a lot of bowls and things more like a pump track would serve. Where you're, you're on your wheels, but you're not doing a lot of tricks per se. You're just transitioning and moving from spot to spot and, and jumping through. Again, you still do the tricks, but what we found in the survey and heard, what the consultant heard from folks that were at those meetings was they wanted more street features. So they wanted the staircases, the grinding rails, more of that. And you've only got so much space, right? So you can't do everything. And so some of those kind of pump track and more transitional things were replaced with more of the street replication type features. You know, I think going into this, I did a lot of looking at the pump tracks. They tend to either be dirt or asphalt. You don't typically see the pump tracks that are concrete, again, just because of the cost associated and just the size of them. And the asphalt works, but really it's geared more towards bikes and scooters. The skateboard will ride it, but again, the skateboarders will tell you, it's just a different riding surface. They, the concrete is really ideal for what they're doing, um, the sliding and doing the tricks. So, not being a skater myself, or having the history of just gleaning that from the meetings that I've been at. It's kind of two different types of parks. Some are more transitional, some are more, s- more street geared. And that pump track, I like a lot of things about the pump track. It really just came down to size and cost and just what can we afford to do? And what we were hearing from the community is we need a skate park. Like, we need to have the pump track, it, you know, a little bit extra cost, that's great, but they're expensive. It's a lot of work, a lot of asphalt, picks up a lot of space.
Um, so how many skaters would this accommodate? If, I mean, if someone really wanted to go skate, how many could do it at a time on something like what we're proposing?
I mean, I've seen skate parks that are really, really full. I, just looking at it, you could fit a lot of people there. How well they're actually maneuvering is, you know, tough to see. I've seen skate park openings where there's just, there's massive, and they seem to be making it work. Um, one of the things is that, uh, most people that use these places, whether they're skating or scootering, they're very respectful of each other. So you can actually fit quite a few people because they take turns and they, you know, if someone is, you know, they don't hog the features is what I've seen. So, um, I mean, if you look at how many features are on there, you can just kind of guess that there could be a couple people at the bowl. There could be people on, you know, the rails. So, I mean, I, I, I think it would accommodate quite a few.
And liability for having too many people on it? Or do, does the city have a liability, say, if we had fifty people trying to skate there at the same time and?
In Oregon, we have recreational immunity where people go to recreate. And, uh, the nice thing about a skate park is it's a recreational facility. Unlike some other things, you wouldn't be going there for some other purpose, you'd be going to your skate.
If somebody breaks their leg, we're not responsible.
It, well, you post things, uh, so that you're not creating a hazard. And it also means you can maintain them. But, you know, you probably wanna have a sign that, uh, you know, kids under a certain age ought to have a helmet, maybe have pads, you know? Those kind of responsible things. Sometimes, um, you see, uh, hangers and helmets are available for people at the. At the skate park.
Do you believe that these, um, features are both for beginners and more advanced? Is that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that was a big focus, was to make sure that, like, a four-year-old could have fun on this and someone who's, um, more advanced could have fun on it. So that was really the big, the big takeaway from this was to make it as accessible for as many as possible. Um, but, you know, to make sure that the kids are gonna have fun on it. It, this is Paloma, and the kids are here and there aren't a lot of specific activities to do. And, you know, we really focused on that and that also played into the location as well.
And then I'll just point out that it looks that we're in a floodplain, where it's very close to being flooded, um, regularly. So, looks like this is mostly built up rather than into the earth?
Yeah, so they do have, um, they would build quite a bit of it up and they took that into account. I mean, again, these people know what they're doing. It's pretty amazing to listen to them talk about it. They've kind of been there, done that. They do a lot of, um, parts in Washington and actually, they, they do them all over the world, but they're based in Washington. So they deal with a lot of rain and a lot of flooding and they, yeah, they've, um, built that for this, including the bowl.
This would not be a much for me pool, this stuff, you know, with.
Yeah, that was a big priority for them to ensure that their design does not do that. We actually looked at some pictures of that, though, through the process.
Councillor McMoore. Um, I think it looks great. I don't know anything about skate parks, so I'm gonna trust the process that this is a great skate park. My questions are more about money. The budget you sent over included some, like, landscaping and stuff, but then your emails said you didn't include all the landscaping. I was just curious what wasn't included.
So, I think what it does include is, like, if they're disrupting landscaping around us while they're building this, that that would be included. So, if here up grass, they're going to include it. The city can get product in here right away. Yeah, we might have to do additional. So sometimes a city wants to do kind of a beautification later, maybe around a skate park. We would have to do that. I think they, they did also include the access path, the accesses, um, the, the drive around so that they can get, you know, over there. So that did include that.
And I guess, that was, it was just there was something else in there about, like, additional parking? Is that like a future thing that's not included in any of the?
Yeah, it's not, um, the Public Works Department, I guess, has some general ideas to maybe, I don't know if it would be painted or, you know, they wanted to put some additional parking on that side. So across the creek, kind of a shelter too.
Oh, okay.
And then they, they did see if, they did look into see if there's potential to put another parking space closer over near this, if it goes in here as well.
And then, um, it's just about, like, maintenance. I guess that is a, I just wanna make sure we're doing that, because that is something I hear from constituents sometimes. I think especially right now, since we are building so much, people will complain that it's like, where do we have all this money to build stuff? When they can't even, you know, like, mow the grass on time or something. And I know we work hard at that, but just like, I guess if we're doing this, I wanna make sure we can afford to keep it nice and also keep the rest of our parks nice.
Right.
So I guess maybe as we enter the budget cycle, we can figure out what that would involve. I don't wanna build something that's gonna, you know, like, involve.
So maybe we should talk about, is this a priority? And, uh, yeah, it's gotta hire, like, so what's our plan for, how can we fund this and what's a realistic timeframe?
So, yeah, so you have the pricing, um, the man I spoke just earlier. Today, the Oregon State Parks and Rec Grant is open right now. Right now is probably a little premature. Chelsea put something in our memo about just staff capacity right now, trying to finish up Cochrane. That's taking more staff time than we thought it would. If they're kind of all hands on deck to try to help get that park finished up. I believe that a strong application, this is based on experience with the Flossie Overland Park. I believe a strong application is gonna show, um, a lot of support from the community for this. And so I think, I mean, why is if this is a priority for the council, just to make sure that we're putting out a year or so, so that we can do. Some awareness campaigns, some fundraising locally and really try to show, um, you know, if, if the council's good with these conceptuals and locations. Again, let's get that polished, let's get a website up and going. Let's get a, uh, email stream going, a people that are interested, Interested Parties group. So that when we do go to the state to ask for some funding, which, you know, I think the best source of funding for this is gonna be that local government grant through Oregon Parks Recreation. Uh, we have a forty percent match there. We've got three hundred thousand dollars budgeted. So my recommendation would be we just keep that three hundred thousand, roll that over, um, keep it budgeted towards the park. And then look to as early as next year's grant cycle to put in for it. You know, it's a six to nine month process to go through there and find out. So we'd be looking a couple years out before construction. But again, that gives us a year for awareness and campaigning and fundraising. Get the grants submitted, then we're gonna have, again, continue to get awareness, additional fundraising, wait for the grant to come in, and then we're looking at construction a couple years out. So kind of loose timeframe, that's what I've got envisioned in my mind. But again, that's subject to hit fast forward or pausing and pushing it out a little bit as well, depending on, on requirements.
Since we would be working presumably with this, um, grind line, would there be an opportunity for in-kind contributions? Do you know?
Asks every municipality that builds a skate park. Yeah, and so we've paid Grindline for the work that they've done, the consulting work. Obviously, it gives them a little bit of a foot in the door, but really, not really. We're gonna, you know, when we're ready to go out for bid, well, this will be part of the bid package that goes out and anybody will be. You know, when we're ready to go out for bid, well, this will be part of the bid package that goes out and anybody will be available to apply for that, right? So we have a, a conceptual, we've got a feasibility study. But obviously, Grindline's interested, I believe would be interested in coming in and bidding on this project, but. You know, I think depending on who you get in there, you can always ask, but really these companies are, they're business, they're not charity. So they're looking to get paid for the work they're doing. Their employees. I, I think our, our efforts are probably better looking to the community for support. There's some other smaller grants out there that support skating specific um, improvements. Time would probably be better spent there. Um, I think you're gonna get contracted with a contract worth, so.
Yeah, I was meaning from like a labor perspective, it was more materials.
Yeah, I mean, between now and then, we could look, we talked to Knife River, we tried, you know, there's some local places we could try to hit up.
I recall that there was a group of Philometh citizens that wanted this badly. Uh, the ones that I had most associate. Time with have now graduated and gone away to college. Are there people here that are passionate that will take fundraising and, and go with it or do they want somebody else to do it?
Yeah, we do have a few people from that group that we're still in contact with. We didn't see as many of them at the public. Meetings that we had that we had hoped or I wasn't involved initially, so I don't know how many there were. There, you know, they, I think they've dwindled a little bit, but I think there are still some very strong supporters. Um, I don't know that they know a lot about how to help with the fundraising, but there are, you know, really great guides. The Skate Park Project, even if you don't get a grant, they have a lot of really good guides for um, grassroots groups finding out. Figuring out how to do the fundraising, how to ask um, another nonprofit if they can. Partner with them so that they don't have to become their own nonprofit, just things like that. So I think there are a lot of resources. We just need to try to get. A couple champions to take it on and see if they can snowball it.
Um, I'd like to move to approve the existing location at City Park as the future skate park location. And accept the conceptual design as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion made by Counselor Andrade and second of the Counselor, um, Prossen. Um, any for the discussion? Counselor Moore, you had, you had a.
Yeah, I don't know if it's. Fully related to the motion then, but just, I guess I, I had concerns about the fundraising piece of it. I also like the idea of community involvement and skinning the game and trying to get as much as we can. But I also know just, Chris and I were talking about like the frolic, you know, might not even be able to meet their full. You know, campaign for the grandstands and they have like a full board that has a ton of, you know. Corporate and community connections and has been doing this for decades. So if they're not able to raise, you know, five hundred thousand dollars. I don't know how we can expect a group that is just kind of getting off the ground to raise three hundred thousand dollars. So I just think we should be realistic about kind of what, what we're hoping to get. And I know, I'm not saying you were expecting three hundred thousand.
No, yeah, and I think that's the important thing. I think um, it, it would be obviously helpful. Anything that could be fundraised would help. Bring that number down for the city. Um, but it really is also about showing that there are actual people. Who want to have the skate park here. You know, because tha- that's a good way to get the people out who are supporting it. And it, it does not mean that we expect. That they're going to go out and get a hundred thousand dollars from anyone, but if they're getting, you know, twenty dollars from a thousand people, that's showing. That there are a thousand people who would give a twenty dollars for that and that's, you know.
I guess the, the second part of that is just then, I think us all being realistic about the fact that like, the city might have to. Put in some more for this if, depending on how the grants and the fundraising goes. Yeah, I, I, we often, it feels like wish we had the community telling us something that they wanted. And I feel like the community has told us, this is something that they wanted. So I think we need to get it done. But just understanding that might mean a little more city funds depending on how things go.
And I'll just, I'll just mention um, in response to that, that the community wants lots of things. And we have certain pots of money, certain, that are certain sizes. And by us prioritizing this, we do have to deprioritize other things, right? And so it's not that we can do everything. But that we might have to, if this is gonna be a come up priority, then we're, there's other things that won't get done. We have to pick and choose.
Um, and I will say that the park advisory board is looking at the strategic plan and the park master plan um, at a meeting this week. So they're going to have um, their kind of recommendations for moving ahead. And so when you do have that discussion. You know, it's not, the skate park is still a priority, but that might help a little bit to see what. They're talking about and, you know, in conjunction and maybe help prioritize. Where that uh, lies with other projects.
So I saw Counselor Nielsen, then Counselor Crocker, then Counselor Andrade.
Point of order. Um, I just wanted to say that um, I think we should. Call the question because whether or not we proceed at this moment is, doesn't pertain to the motion. Uh, the motion is just to approve it and approving it doesn't mean it's going to, that we're definitely going to move on it and we're definitely going to. Do things, although that is the goal, so.
Yeah, so I have, um, so you jumped the gun. I hear your point of order, but um. We need to see if Counselor Nielsen and Counselor Crocker's comments or questions are related to the.
About the motion. So this motion doesn't mean we're committing to in two years. Fund six hundred thousand. That's not what the motion.
To clarify, it's the first motion in the agenda item summary.
Essentially, the feasibility study makes the recommendation use the existing location of that current skate park. It's giving directions for staff. So again, as we're moving through it, as we're talking to people, as the community's here, they're looking, they say, hey, the city council's approved this feasibility study. Here's what we're thinking. So let's give it us some guideline. With what we paid for, we, we paid for feasibility study. That's what we've got. So we're gonna make some decisions based on that. So we can just keep the ball moving forward.
Many part really would be the second motion. Veer from that conversation.
Mine does not pertain to the motion.
So uh, then we have a call for question. Um, all in favor, please use your hand and say aye. Aye, motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Excellent. Well, great conversation. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your interest. You're also welcome to stay for the remainder.
Got skaters, how can we, as, as citizens, how can we get involved?
And just keep engaged with the.
Keep in touch with me. I've been on the materials, so. If you reach out to me, I will put you on lists to make sure that you're involved.
Currently there, it gained a lot of recognition this past week. It wasn't necessarily.
Let me share the link with you all. Yeah, and so the reference is that um. On Friday or Saturday, there was a YouTube link shared by a well-known skater. Who was in Philometh and did a video um, on world's worst skate park. That being said, so he did a nice video, uh, he did a nice video and it was entertaining. And when I looked at it on Saturday, it had eighty-eight thousand views. Five or six hours later, it had a hundred and ten thousand views and it's gone up since then.
It's like a great fundraising. If you like this.
But then I'll just say that you didn't, they weren't necessarily saying we are the actual worst. He's got a series. Got a whole bunch of nation's worst.
But he did do some great tricks on our skate park, so it was kind of like, it's pretty good.
Did you want to address the second motion that's in order? Is that table for now?
Regarding the motion.
Now the, the, the funding part. To explore the fu- the funding. I don't know that you need to make a motion to do that today.
Well, I guess there's maybe like a little clarity about capacity. I'd, I'd like to direct you to. For the grant, but like, can you?
Yeah, that, so in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, yeah, I just, I want, just, is that kind of?
Yeah, not for this.
Is there anything else that you feasibly could do between now and then or is that?
I was sick. Well, I mean, I'll charge Chelsea with reaching out to individuals who are here tonight. Getting, you know, sharing the information. We'll get a page built saying, hey, the feasibility stays be completed. Here's what's been approved. Um, you know, contact the city. If you've got interest and would like to know how you can help. Uh, spread the word and help with fundraising. And so, you know, plant the seed. And then again, I think we've got a couple of, as Chelsea said, we've got a couple of individuals very interested. Which helps, but to have a successful application next year, that's just gotta grow, right? I mean, it's gotta be ten, tenfold what we have right now. Be able to show. And it's literally taking pictures of people sitting around tables talking about skate parks. Out at the site, you know, with a banner up that says skate, future skate park here. Those are the things that help blue committees to show this isn't just the city council that wants this park. It's not just in the park master plan. But there's actual grassroots efforts being done to support the skate park. And that's really sway, that really goes a long way in swaying. People that it's worth putting state money toward those projects.
Give them the link to the world's worst skate park.
I would like to see more community involved and if they are not gonna step up. That would be the only thing that would hold me back on wanting to do this because. I was disappointed also. We had a big meeting where Grindline was here and explained everything and there was. A dozen or twenty people here and I would like to have seen fifty or a hundred. I mean, if, if we've got that much interest. I would like them to show up and be counted.
All the twenty seems like a lot. On this new topic and Counselor Mc- Lemon.
Uh, yeah, and also I think it would be a good idea if we might want to reach out to some um, existing. Community organizations that could serve as a pass through or something like that. So then they don't have to go.
Counselor, do you need to take a break?
Uh, thanks. I just also wanted to point out that, yes, that was, that is a lot of people who still showed up to a meeting like that, but um. That as a reminder, a lot of people who end up using the skate park are younger and maybe in school. And so they might be reliant on transportation or have other kinds of things. So um, even if we don't. See as many people as we would like, um, just as a reminder that there are people who support it, but a lot of people just. Can't necessarily attend or do some of the, 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 the lifting of um, for fundraising and, and stuff like that.
Thank you. And then Counselor Nielsen, I'd love to move on to the next.
Um, I would just be very interested in seeing what the park board has because I've had several other individuals contact me. And regards to our parks for like, for young children and some modifications for ADA and other things that, goals that we would love to have. Modifications on the back park of the city park, that back area. And so to see what the park board has in mind priority wise. Like, good to see. So thank you.
Comment to you next month, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Moore, I'll be quick. Um, I guess just as we do this next phase. If the city can really, and I, it's not that you haven't been doing this, but really just try to communicate to the community that we are going to build the skate park. Um, I feel like at, like the coffee and at the farmer's market and that, like, there seems to be this sense that like the city keeps. Blowing it off and not wanting to do it. And I don't think that's ever been the case. Like, it, it just, I think really making that clear that like. It will get built. Um, and like the, we just unanimously as a council approved this, you know, like it's not even really that controversial. It's just a matter of the money. I think that would be helpful.
It's a process. Um, we, we are continually battling that. We do have um, a little bit of.
I'm sure.
Issues, but we're, building the page will help a lot. Because we'll have a page on our website.
And thank you. So let's move back to a little business. Um. We discussed intergovernmental agreement with building codes to division for each permit system.
Yes, this came before you at the last meeting. Uh, there were a few questions about. Cost of the program and kind of breaking out the budget and what things look like. So provide some extra detail. Appreciate the city recorder. Neural explanation of kind of how the funding works and give them a little bit more insight there. So. Don't have a lot more to add than other ones in the memo, but happy to answer questions and happy to report that Ruth Post is feeling better and is here tonight. She can answer any additional questions as well. That was very good timing. Moderately, but.
You wanted to do it wrong. I just went to. Our recorder on this outstanding and exhaustive explanation of the. I'm sorry that you had to put that to the third place.
Should we have a motion, Counselor Nielsen?
I'll move to approve the intergovernmental partnership agreement with the Department of Consumer and Business Services. Building codes to division and direct the city manager to execute the agreement.
Thank you. And we have a second by Counselor McMoran. First was by Counselor Nielsen. Um, any further discussion? See none. All in favor, please use your hands. Say aye. Aye, motion carried unanimously. Excellent. Now we're gonna go ahead and move on to new business two point O. Uh, and discuss the city attorney services agreement.
Great, I'll pick that one. Um, so this is just the next step in the process. That we brought before you when you selected Yuri Elsmer and Hammond to be the city attorney. They have provided a draft agreement. You know, items that were in our, our P, the, the price proposal that they gave us. Um, so. That's pretty much straightforward. This is what they've provided for us.
Excellent. Counselor Moore?
The only question I had was on the communication practices. Um, where it talks about everything goes through the city manager except if a mayor or city counselor. Gets approval from the council or with matters related to the performance of the city manager. And unique sensitive personal, but city-related matters. Or authorization of the city manager. Rest of it. Um, just trying to understand. So does that mean? Me can contact the attorney if we have a question about the city manager or. I guess then what does unique, you know, mean? And then, does that mean even if we have like a grave concern about, and correct, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to pick on you, but. Like, if we have some grave concern about the city manager, that still can't exceed thirty minutes? Without a council meeting or?
So this is their determined engagement. So I mean, there's some flexibility here. So. It's some verbal conversations we've had about this section. If you call their office, one of the first things they're gonna say is, have you talked to the city manager yet about this issue? Have you talked to the city council yet about this issue? And, and they do that consistently. They have a lot of clients. They get a lot of phone calls coming in. And so they're, before you even talk to an attorney. They're, they're knowing who you are and what it's about and, and just kind of checking some boxes, right? So that's first and foremost, the triage, those calls coming in. You know, there's got to be some type of a gatekeeper for lack of better purpose. And. In this instance, when we're talking to the attorneys and we're getting billed for that, that's incurring an expense. And as an individual member of the city council, you don't really have the authority to. Expenses on behalf of the city. You give me that authority and I do, right? I incur expenses all day long, every day for this. And so, um, you know, for me to contact the city attorney, so you know, if it's something. That the city has a question about. Then we're gonna contact the attorney and we're gonna get. If it's a question that you have, then if you have, then it should come to me and. Either I'll say, yeah, that's a great question for the city and I'll incur that expense and talk to them. Or I'll say, yeah. Don't know if that's pertinent. I don't know that's necessarily the city's best interest, but let's talk to the city council. And if the council agrees, then again, we'll take it to the, to the. For the attorney. Though, you know, if it's concerning the city management or the city manager and so that. Kind of that gatekeeper is gonna be the issue. Though, you know, if it's concerning the city management or the city manager, and so that kind of that gatekeeper is gonna be the issue. I would still recommend unless it's egregious and time sensitive, I would still recommend that you bring it to the council. And as a council, you make the decision that we really should talk to the city attorney about this. And like Chris, no offense or whoever it might be, um, we feel like we can talk to the city attorney about your upcoming contract renewal. Or whatever it might be. And then at that point, you select somebody to make that phone call and and you go that route. So I don't think it really. Um, hinders anything that we would want you as individual city council members to do, but it will reflect from kind of bad actors. Uh, for lack of a better word, from incurring expenses on behalf of the city that the city doesn't. We all don't necessarily want to be incurred, right? So I think the language makes sense. I looked through it and read through this carefully and. And to me, it felt very fair and pretty straightforward.
I think the other thing that they're probably wanting you. The the corporate you, the councils, to give each other the authority to do is to call if you think you have like a conflict. Inches or an ethical thing of your own. That you might not feel comfortable calling the city manager or saying in open session, you know.
Yeah, okay.
I was thinking about this and I was just wondering, is it illegal?
I may have broken the law.
But don't think differently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we could still call them if someone, I'm not not that whatever.
I think I I think that's one of those things that you you as a body agree among yourselves. And some management there because a five hour conversation about, you know, your ethical problem.
Yeah.
You see the rates of the.
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah. Okay, okay.
So there's a record in motion.
Actually, I have a question on um page three of the agreement. For your purchase subcontract services. It is specified there that perhaps it's implied that that. We would be aware of. That would be charged by this actor.
I think you would not give consent if you didn't know what that.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Should the fees of a subcontractor be specified in the agreement? Would be provided.
And so and then you said suggested that the city's consent, we probably wouldn't offer the consent unless we knew the costs.
I I don't think that it would hurt anything. And I think I I don't think Yuri Elsner would have any problem with you saying in in the. May with cities consent subcontract services. At an agreed upon price or something like that, uh, when a specialized need for legal services arises. It typically what you would get with this is it will be higher than their rates.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't see the city consenting to that unless we know what those costs are going to be. Estimated timeframe and a max budget allowance type thing. So I. I think it's covered. We could be more specific if we wanted to, but I I think it. Not gonna consent to unless we know what we're getting into, right? I I will say, and we haven't talked on this, Chelsea's talked on this more. I know our labor attorney that we used does um. Or with or consults with Barry Elsner and Hammond as well. Um, was one of the concerns we had is if they would cover that or if we'd have our own labor attorney. And they said they work hand in hand and cooperative. So I don't know if that would be under this agreement or we'd still have a separate contract. But the would look like, but that would be an example, or we'd say we're gonna contract with. Um, you know, our our labor council's passed and this is the amount and this is everything else. So. Just an example, it's that that would be an agreement we'd have ahead of time. So we know what we're getting into.
I think for water permitting in the past, we we hired a specialist to obtain water rights from the city.
With respect to the previous point regarding ethical questions, my understanding is that the Oregon Ethics Commission is extremely helpful with those issues.
They are.
So, you know, they would be a resource that wouldn't up the costs of.
Councilor McMoran? I just wanted to clarify kind of what subcontract means, because I guess I'm. Like, we usually talk about it in terms of like our construction, where we just pay a contractor an amount of money. And with that amount of money, they. Hire contractors or subcontractors, but we never actually pay them. So I guess why, like, if if we're gonna pay additional amounts for some specialist that the contractor can't do. Why is that a subcontract if we're just paying for it?
It it could be that you would enter into a a contract. It could be uh that because of timing. You don't have time to go through the public procurement process. And it's it's faster to call them and say, we have you on contract. We want you to do this one too. We understand it may not be within your book of business.
Okay, okay. But regardless, it wouldn't be like a construction subcontractor where it's included in the price.
No. Whereas the undercoating.
Yes.
I'll make a motion. Um, I motion to authorize the city manager to execute a personal services agreement. For city attorney services with Barry Elsner and Hammond.
Thank you. We have a motion made by Councilor Nielsen and seconded by Councilor Cosi. Any further discussion, comments, questions? See none? All in favor, please raise your hands. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
You're going to enjoy looking with Malia, Ashley and Chad. You can there a first rate.
The next item, I just wanted to double check. Does anyone need a break? Okay, we're gonna take a five minute break. Um, we'll come back. So next on the agenda is. Okay, so next on the agenda is the Samaritan Award nomination. Hopefully we can have this conversation in ten fifteen minutes. Move forward. Nice agenda. So. Councilor, and so I will, I'll just mention um that historically. When the cities thinks about these different categories. We really think about folks that have engaged with the city. Um, and like the people that we nominate typically are people that involve the city that the city would like to recognize for one reason or another. Um, we all also have the ability to make personal recommendations and we can reach out and make our own personal nominations. But as a city council, this is our, this is what we're playing forward. So just kind of leaving that out there and uh hopefully this note and Councilor Crocker.
I'd like to nominate Candy Kates as the Samaritan Award from the city for her uh long term dedication to our. Offices in city council.
Thank you for that. First off, I think that's a great recommendation. Candy has been involved in the city for quite a few years. And uh, and then she just stepped off the budget committee. Seems like a good timing to uh nominate her. And I don't know that she's been recognized before. We don't have some record of.
Chamber does, and we didn't grab that and provide it, but if you run a name by me, I could probably tell you. Come back eight or nine years.
Have Candy or Dale Collins.
Dale has.
Candy has not, Dale has. I think Dale's well recognized by the city and he got the senior first citizen.
And so that's for the Samaritan Award?
From the city.
Any other thoughts for any other nominations?
Well, I sent out or somebody's passed on my nominations. I have one for each of the first citizens, all the different levels. Through my time being here in Philomath and I've gotten to know a lot of people and I've gotten to watch a lot of amazing volunteers. And I feel passionate about recognizing them because that's what makes our city work. We used to be called the City of Volunteers. I think somewhat, well, I I haven't seen as many step up. Yeah, okay. Very, we did a bunch of stuff. That was huge. So do you want me to just name them or what would you like me to do?
If you if you're suggesting that maybe that the city recognize them, the things, I think you should mention them. If it's something that you're gonna do personally, then I don't think you need to.
I'd good focus on this Samaritan Award from the city first. There's other nominations for that. And then we can move on to the first citizen at large ones.
Any other nominations for Samaritan Awards? Councilor Cosi?
Um, I think Janelle, who has run the farmer's markets, has really done a great job and um. Has helped our visibility. I know. I think she's been a good partner with the city.
It's a great nomination too. Councilor Andrade?
Um, are we giving reasons now or are we just throwing out names first?
If you would like to offer reasons, that's fine. I think especially if you wanna mention right now candy for Candy or for Janelle, I think that would be great.
Thank you. I was. Um, I agree that Janelle has done so much, um, especially with the um farmer's market. And then also wanted to point out that I believe she's on the art committee and I think she's been on a couple other like. She was on like the Main Street Committee or Main Street Plan. Project um for the housing needs analysis and stuff like that. I think she did that as well.
Thank you. Councilor McMoran?
Just a thought. If we gave the Samaritan Award to Candy and then nominated Janelle for a first citizen. Cause I feel like Candy's involvement, at least with us, is specifically with the city as an organization. Whereas Janelle touches a lot of the things the city does, but her involvement is more maybe wide with the farmer's market and. Multiple backyards. That's just, that would be my inclination.
Great suggestion.
Do you know her age? Cause that's.
I think I bet she knew you fit in.
No one's gonna touch that.
Any other thoughts on Samaritan Award specifically? In some ways, I think it maybe I appreciate the suggestion. I do think it makes sense to talk about the different awards just so that. Like Councilor McMoran, it's like, oh, well, maybe we do think about this person here. Um, one thing as I was thinking about for junior first citizen was uh Rose Bicker. Um, that really involves and I think is really seems to be um. Involved in numerous ways, not only in inclusivity in parks, but uh also just in the community more generally. Councilor Andrade?
Uh, I also wanted to support Rose's nomination. Um. She also uh organized the first pride event in Philomath and um. This will now be our third year doing it and it's slowly transitioning to the cities. And she uh just takes a really huge uh role in making that happen. And is super involved in the inclusivity committee.
Was she recognized last?
And park advisory board. No, Xena was.
Was it Maeve Dempsey that was like?
Xena was last year. Maeve was the year before.
Any other thoughts on any of these categories? Councilor Lehman?
I've always been a big a big fan of Rich Salsa at the fire department.
Um, he's very open to having conversations with just about anybody and he's always full of great information and he shows up to public events. And I know he's their communications person, so he is quoted all the time and everything like that, but he also. Seems like he knows what he's talking about most of the time, so.
He's also.
But I don't know which category would best suit him.
Well, he, he is retiring this year too.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, so that might be inappropriate.
So he might be more of a senior first citizen candidate than we thought?
Our service requirements are a little early, I don't know, but um, yes, they will be hiring a new deputy chief this summer.
I have mine too.
And we're, so we have a suggestion for, we have two suggestions for first citizens. Janelle and Rich Salsa.
I have suggestions for all of them, but.
Get them out, man.
I did not know that they were supposed to be.
Which is okay, like I said, you can submit them on as an individual.
Yeah, and I can do that, but eighteen and under. Do we have a lot of engagement with eighteen and under?
Last year, we, I mean, historically, we have had, and we have. Made some nominations, but we don't always.
Well, I've got Tana Dallas down, he has done a great deal, he's worked. Um, projects on the cemetery, cleaning it up and working, he cleans up, he's in Boy Scouts and. And between those two, there's a great deal of community involvement he's had. He has represented Philomath well, he has done three big projects, you may have read in the. Philomath News, he did a outdoor education center for the elementary school as his eagle project and. Just an outstanding individual. I've got a whole write-up, but you guys have them on your email, I guess, so.
Does anyone else have any suggestions on junior first citizens?
Maybe junior or future?
He is future.
I'm sorry, I meant for future.
He's seventeen right now.
I mean, I know of folks that I think would be good, but not through the city, so I guess that's kind of my. That's more from like being on the school board, but that seems like then the school district should.
Right?
Yeah.
And the only person I was in, I had any inkling at all was the person that won the if I were mayor award last year.
Sure.
But that's the only person that I was thinking of.
Isn't it based on volunteerism or not?
Um, it's based on whatever we want it to be based on.
No, I thought that it was supposed to be.
Contributions.
To the community, so whatever. Great as that was, yeah.
Did you take that person's suggestions to the planning commission?
And I gave, I did pass it on, I. And then, and senior first citizen.
I have confirmation of Rich Salsa as a senior first citizen.
Well, that makes it easy.
So that, yeah.
I wanna know what that text looked like.
I was thinking.
Summary, summary.
You just asked him.
Over or under?
Well, then, yeah, I guess, can I move that we. Um, I don't, if it's our award, but. Nominate Candy Coats or our.
For Candy would be that we recognize.
You Candy Cates for the, the Philomath Samaritan Award, Janelle. Butjoy. For the first citizen award and Rich Salsa for the senior first citizen award.
Junior?
Rose?
Oh, and Rose Bricker for the, thank you, no, I, yes, for the junior first citizen award.
Anything about future?
I'm not, that's not part of my motion, you can do that later.
Okay, so we have a motion on table. Counselor, with motion on the table, I meant Counselor McMoran, seconded by Counselor Lehman, need further conversation?
I do have someone for senior and the person, I mean, it's not this city council, but was. Uh, very involved in starting PYC and was. Asked by the city council to be a part of that, no, I mean, there was, but it's asked, so I don't know if that counts, but.
You can make them. Uh, you can make the motion to amend.
I would like to nominate Dina Smith as the senior. And she's been on the boards of PYC and PCS, she has made a huge difference in this. I mean, she's done a whole lot, I've got it all written up, but. She worked with June Anderson, when June was still alive, that had, they did have been meeting first, that's now coming to June's kids closet. And she's the one that built them over there and did it and.
So is that a motion to amend, Counselor McMoran's motion?
I don't wanna mess anybody's stuff. I just would like to know, but that's.
Um, so, any further discussion? Counselor Cosi.
I'd like to amend. Counselor McMoran's motion. Tanner for the. Future first citizen.
Cause we have a motion to amend, we have a second. A second by Counselor Lehman.
Can I have the motion again, please?
To amend his motion to add Tanner, what's the last name?
Wallace.
As future first citizen.
Thank you. So we have a motion made by Counselor Cosi, seconded by Counselor Lehman. To amend the original motion. Uh, any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of amending Counselor McMoran's motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries, uh, so now, any further discussion on the amended motion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, uh, thank you very much for all that input and discussion, we got some amazing folks that. Uh, in our city. None of them actually win, you know, I. It's an honor to be able to recognize these folks and to be able to have them recognized by being nominated by the city. Okay, next we'll go ahead and have a conversation about the update to the strategic plan.
Grand line, this is just an update, there will, in the memo, we'll. Be looking to do our annual update of the strategic plan next month, I was thinking the first meeting, but. Um, maybe look at the second meeting in February, just timing wise. So hold that, do a, give us a little bit more time and hold a work session through updates. With that, that'll include me pulling off all of the action items that we completed for fiscal year. And pulling all that, put it in appendix and so it'll be a little bit cleaner version. And easier for the council to see on weakening things, adjusting things, adding items, reprioritizing a little bit, so. Uh, look for that in February, so this is really just a report on things that have happened over the last three months. Over November, December, uh, so hopefully it's just helpful, but I'm happy to, happy to answer any questions on things that are noted as having. Been completed or things are noted as planned or in process. There's quite a bit of that, cause it's a living document, so some of this is underway right now. Like our next agenda item is taking care of one of the items on here, which was involving the. Byways management plan and so, again, some of the stuff's in progress still, but happy to answer your questions that the council's got, otherwise it's really just intended to inform you on what we're doing, no?
Any comments, questions, observations? Counselor Cosi.
Um, I think there were a couple of things that I'd hoped to see in here that aren't in here. And I, I don't know, do you want us to make those suggestions in February or?
There were some additions made at the last meeting and honestly, I just didn't have time to get those in there, so I do have those noted and I'll include those in when we're doing the updating.
Okay.
We'll add those in, um, none of them were specific to things that needed to happen like right now, specifically there was. Conversations that were gonna be had at some of the committee levels that were put in here and I, I didn't include all those, so, and that's just, I didn't have time, so. Hopefully added in when we do the update in February, I'll include those language, that language in there.
Go ahead and have a conversation about the senior byway corridor.
Quite a bit of background information here, just to, that council members that have, most of, I think, not all are new. Since we first started looking at this byway project. This is run through Oregon Department of Transportation in a partnership with Tourism Office, it really is about getting people off of the main thoroughfare and getting them onto these. More rural highways and byways throughout the state. Uh, they do a really nice glossy magazine every year, there's also a very nice website on Visit Oregon. Uh, that you can look at, that highlights these byways, has the maps, has points of interest along the way, ours has this really great audio. Trek that you can take, as you're taking it, you can actually download the app and put it on your phone and as you're reaching points or coming up to points. It'll kick on with audio over what's coming up and points of interest, like look to your known one mile, look to your left and you'll see it too. So we kind of did this pilot project, I thought they might do it to all of them and I don't know where it went, but we have it on ours, which is. So, and with that approval, we had to go through quite a process, we had to put a management plan in place, have a committee and so everything worked up and worked great, we got the signs out. And then you have elections and you get new people on board and things start falling off and so it's kind of where we've been the last several years. I've got, Visit Corvallis, um, has agreed to really take the lead on this again and help get the committee up and going and running. I've been pushing on it, there's new leadership in Walport that's interested as well, uh, the previous mayor is there and still interested, but she's the previous mayor and so she's working to kind of train her. Um, new leadership as well on the importance of these tourism byways, so. We're just getting started, as I put in here, we're just looking for somebody on the council who's got some interest in the tourism side of this or being a part of this. I did put in there, wanna be somebody that's willing to take a little bit of a lead on this, so if you've got some time constraints or a lot of other things you're involved in. Again, just depending on your interest, this would be something I'm, I'm really hoping can take the lead on this committee. Um, helps set dates and times, encourage other people to join in, so it may be more than just coming to a meeting once every three months. And really being a little bit more of an active leadership role in this committee to get it up and going off the ground and eventually. Might build a back half a little bit, but we are just in the infancy of getting this committee up and going. And the focus is gonna be on that management plan, I included the link, if you had time to go look at, if not, you can look later. There's a management plan in place and mostly, um, that management plan isn't like repave the road or. And then it's really about adding points of interest, adding signage along the way of points of, four points of interest. Uh, making sure the audio that we did is up to date and maybe it's redone every four or five years. Um, so it's that type of thing, I imagine that there'll be some reports back to the council or some requests to the city for some funding as projects come up. Uh, there's this kind of loose agreement that everybody's gonna help contribute to those, but there's no commitments, there were not any commitments when it came to scenic byway. Um, but I imagine if one of the goals that the committee has is, hey, let's build this new project. They'll divvy out the costs and they'll come to the city council and say, hey, are we willing to pay this amount of money? Um, use some of our tourism funds that were collected and put it towards some improvements on, on Highway thirty-four. Um, that type of thing, so it serves as a liaison, but again, also a very active member on this committee, so. Just looking to make an appointment, we could have done this back in January, kind of fell off my radar, so I'm bringing it back now, it's a little bit more of an explanation of what we're looking for with this committee. I'll be pretty active on it as well and helpful, but again, I'm on elected officials, so I only carry so much weight, you know, it's when the elected officials come on. They start to really happen, so. I'll leave it at that, anybody interested?
Does anybody feel strongly interested and, you know, wanna help out with this trade?
I mean, I think it's really cool, I'd be happy to do it, I just. If someone else wants to do it, they should do it.
Counsel Andrade.
I was gonna say same, like, I mean, I, I was really interested in it, but, but with the. Time constraints and stuff, I wouldn't be able to do a leadership thing, so if no one else wants to do it and do the leadership part of it. Then I would go for a not leadership part, if that makes sense.
And the leadership's not required, it was more my hope, I guess, just knowing where the committee's at, but there. You know, a lot of the committees haven't even selected leaders yet and so it may be some extra phone calls and outreach to say, hey. You know, I'm a city council member in Philomath, running this committee, go on, it's gonna come better coming from an elected official than coming from me, right, so.
Would it be okay if I asked on a scale of one to ten, how, or one to five, how interested you are, Counselor McMoran?
I, what's, what is the scale?
Five being most interested?
I'll tell you after you give your number.
Willing to make eye contact. I'll do a three point eight.
Counselor Andrade, do you have a range that you're?
Yeah, it's, it's more of also that, like, I. I mean, assuming that I will get my liaison ship for the HOPE board, like, I, I have not had a liaison position. Like, last year I didn't have one, um, so. I also, like, can be on it anyway. If, if I do get my position with the HOPE board, then, like, Christopher, you can have it, I don't, I don't care.
I guess the only other thing I'll say, I have more. Time available this year because it's a short legislative session and then next year I will have less time, so. If I can help get it up and running or something this year and then I could step back, that might work out well.
I think we just put this on the list with all the others for next year and in January next year, it'll be on the list with all the other liaison positions and, and if that's how you're feeling. At the end of the year, then you just let the mayor know that he likes somebody else to replace you.
I, I just wanna support him and that he has the technology and he's, I assume you all know that he's got filming and all sorts of. Interests, so he, he's got the skills. Going to do, yes, do some videos.
Just to confirm, you are the HOPE Advisory Committee person and now you're also on the executive committee, just so you know.
Why? When is that, has there been a meeting?
I know I missed a meeting, I thought I was supposed to be that person, but I was thinking that you were that person, so, anyway, you are that person and Chris will work for you.
Okay, cause I haven't received any information about when we're meeting, so.
Okay, you will. Awesome, so it sounds like we have a volunteer of Counselor McMoran.
I would nominate him, but that's not what we're doing, yeah. I don't.
Excellent. Any updates? All right, oh, Counselor Cosi.
Mentioned that we had a great coffee with the council. Um, one of our planning commissioners came and two other citizens were there and Susan Halliday was there. And there was some great discussion, particularly about walkability of the city or lap area.
That I didn't even bring up.
Yeah, we thought of you.
Yeah, no, it was great, I, and I, I've been really encouraged, I think we got like three people, some three or four people the first time, two of whom are my parents and then. But then this time, yeah, we got like five people, so I'm hoping as people realize, you know, it's, it's consistent every month, same place. It'll continue to grow and I think, yeah, and when it's not icy out, and I mean, I think I was sharing with these two that. The other thing I thought is really encouraging is I've like run into people out around town who haven't come, but they've been like, oh, I see you're doing the, the coffees, like, that's really cool, you know, so I think that makes a difference, even if they aren't, they aren't able to show up to just know that we're there.
Can I just verify that initially you've, you, we advertised it as through March, are you continuing, are you planning to continue?
Yes, I think we are, I think it was, we just didn't wanna schedule it all year if no one, if it was bust. Yes, I think we are, I think it was, we just didn't wanna schedule it all year if no one, if it was bust. So, I think we are, and the one thing we're talking about is maybe reevaluating the time. Um, cuz it seems like people usually show up for like the later half of it, so maybe. Starting at like ten and going to eleven thirty and something like that, but when do you need to know that by?
Oh, because we've been promoting it in the newsletter.
Sure.
The weekly, the weekly email is easier to change, but the newsletter, we have to finalize it about a week before the end of the month.
Yeah, okay.
Close to that, so if you wanna change it for next month.
I think we'll try to keep it for February, March, like we said, and then it would be April, we might change it, but yeah.
Councilor Cogger?
You said, um, you call, you called for, um, the. I am very pleased and proud, those um stakes that they put in the street outside Clemens is. It seems to be working very well, I, much better than I expected, so, uh I wanted to report on that. And I'm on the Philomath uh Community Foundation, we're having a work session in February, so that'll be fun, and we'll see you on a Saturday.
And can I, can I mention one thing, um, uh kudos to our public works in that, in our. Ca- coffee with the counselors, they were mentioning how pleased the citizens were with the work of our public works department. And I think we need to say that out loud and, and report that, that our citizens do appreciate the work that is being done by public works in our city, and. They do a phenomenal job, and uh we wanna express, I wanna express that.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to make a couple announcements, as a reminder, we have. Um, the justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion training this Saturday from eight AM to two PM. Uh at City Hall, and uh we also. For um Black History Month is in February, and we have two events that the Inclusivity Committee has uh helped sponsor. We have the um, an event at the museum. Um, let's see, sorry, uh February seventh, uh starting at six thirty. Uh we'll have, uh it's, join us in collection, collective reflection of the myths and realities of African-American history. Oregon's complex black history and the lived experience of growing up and living in Philomath as a person of color. Uh with speakers, uh Xena Allen, a Philomath resident, and Dr. Robert D. Thompson, Jr. He's an OSU Associate Professor of Ethnic Studies. And we also have an event on February twenty-second at seven PM. Uh, it's a free movie screening of Buffalo soldiers fighting on two fronts. And then following the movie director Drew Hawley from Vancouver, Washington. And Oregon Black Pioneer's President Zachary Stocks will be available to answer questions from the audience. And a big thank you to all of the sponsors and to the city for helping to make these events happen. Hope, hope to, hope you'll be there, I don't know if I can be there necessarily with, um, but I'll, I'll definitely be there in spirit, it's a little difficult. Mobility wise at the moment, but, so.
Thank you, and I'll just mention Samaritan Awards, everybody is all welcome to come, invited, and hopefully you do. I will unfortunately be out of town, but.
I guess, one last thing is I went to the county legislative breakfast on Saturday. I know, I, they're always great, I always appreciate them, but I question how much I appreciate them. It was good, I think it's just, and I'm sure our attorneys in the future, rest in peace, Jim. That will, will help us keep abreast of this, but just, I think, it sounds like there will probably be, you know, changes specifically around. Um laws relating to drug use and sort of law enforcement with that, that will probably affect us, so. Just something for us to stay aware of, I think, as a city, everything else, I don't know, I mean, and then. That will also affect things like public health and everything, but we don't, really, that's more of a county thing, so, um just, you know, that'll. Be something for us to look forward to.
Councilor Lehman?
Notice, um, I think yesterday in the paper, I saw some paper. That um the city of Medford had gotten a review done of their pathways and their camping. Laws and it passed through the system and was okay, and I'm just wondering if we might wanna. Look at what they've done and see how that fits in with what we currently have, cuz it's been a while since we talked about it, but. Seemed like they were able to successfully do stuff that it sounds like what we wanted to do, but we didn't know if we were doing it. Gotta throw that out there, and one last comment, which is, um. The sidewalks don't get cleared when there's any kind of thing on the roads, and so I. Appreciate most of my fellow citizens of Philomath accommodating to pedestrians who are forced to walk in the roadway because the sidewalks were not clear. Even for a couple days after the roads were, so, anyway, just wanna throw that out there.
Excellent, thank you. All right, with that.
I can say something about Medford, something came up, so, uh, you know, we had two. You have Boise, which is the case of where the Ninth Circuit basically said. Uh you can't criminalize homelessness, uh and. You need to allow, you, you, you cannot prohibit people from sleeping in public. Uh with at least minimal uh bedding, not necessarily camping. Uh if there are not adequate shelter beds available for them. Um, then we had the Grants Pass case uh in federal court in Oregon. So the, the key thing about which was going to the Supreme Court. Uh, they've accepted cert on that, it'll, it'll go to review. My thought is, it will have no effect on Oregon whatsoever, because we have. A statutory uh standard for allowing people to sleep, rest. Uh stay warm and dry on public property that is different than uh what Boise required. What Medford did. Uh, in front of the same judge who made the decision on the Grants Pass case. Is they took their reasonable time, place, manner, uh restrictions under state law. And the judge said, yeah, you know, this works, now it helps that they have a bunch of shelter beds. But they're also a, a much larger city than, than Philomath, uh they have a very. Involved and sophisticated shelter operator, uh who has kinda transitional. Things with camps, with group shelters, with transitional housing. The most significant thing uh that the federal judge said in that case is, uh again, making it clear. There is no constitutional right to camp, and while you and I may agree that a person. Would be, would have better shelter in the winter from rain and cold, in the summer from, or insects and heat. That's not the standard. Uh, so, uh as long as people can rest, you're not, you're not criminalizing somebody. If they can rest, if they can sleep in, in public places, you don't have to give them a right to set up a tent.
Can you remind us, me, um about sleeping in a car, I, there's a family that I've.
Grants Pass, actually, uh, part of it was car camping. And, um. Hard to tell from that case whether that's just included because that's what their ordinance said. It prohibited sleeping in cars in public places, um or if. There really is some distinction between staying warm and dry, uh have, having a place to rest. And doing it in a car as opposed to outside of a car, it's hard to tell from that case.
What, what about Philomath, do we have, uh, is there a differentiation between the two?
I don't think so.
So, people should be allowed to sleep in their car?
Um, what they would have, what, what you might run into is, how long can you have your car parked in a particular place? So I don't think that you can live in your car for a week, uh, on a city street, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, as long as you move it every day.
Yeah. Or every forty-eight hours, whatever the standard.
I think we have a family that's moving in trouble for sleeping in their car and they move the car, so I don't know what's, what's up about that.
There is a, there is a point where you cross from, I'm an old guy who sometimes falls asleep. In the afternoon in my car, not while I'm driving. Uh, you know, um, and I, I've, I've had the same thought about, you know. Uh, that equal protection thing of, you go to a park, you're sitting on a park bench, and you nod off. Places that have had restrictions on sleeping in public. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure it would ever be, well, sometimes I would pre-. Uh, I'm not sure that it would be enforced against me in the same way that it's enforced against other people.
Yes.
What I would say about people, uh, less with car camping, my, my observation is less with car camping. More with RVs, is that. Um, it's not just the car, it's associated stuff that becomes stored in the public right of way. And that, that's a, it's, it's just, it's a different function.
And the moving is a right, is, is important difference.
It, it would be, yeah, but you also, you know, there's. There are, there are sanitary issues, there are all kinds of issues that, that um could come into play, and I. Thank you for, thanks for that, more than you ever wanted.
With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting, but thank you all for being here.
Kelsey, night and day difference. The whole time, that last part?